We call to order tonight at 7:00 PM. Start with legislative amendments. Let's begin this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Christian Saints, one nation, on one ground, in one temple, with liberty and justice. Okay, welcome everybody. Today is May 20th, 25th. The first item on our agenda is the agenda and the approval of last month's meeting minutes from April 15th. At this time, if there are any adjustments or additions, deletions to tonight's agenda or last month's meeting minutes.
Would we want to do the unfinished minutes? If we want to go from home occupation, make that number two, make special land use for one weekend?
Are we just going to switch those two around?
Yeah.
That's not too basic.
Correct. Okay, so we will alternate items one and two in unfinished business without any other changes. I'll ask for a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes and approve tonight's agenda with the flip of items one and two on our unfinished business.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion. A motion of the second, all in favor, so you want to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, carry. Thank you. Okay, first item on tonight's agenda, we will open the floor to citizen comments. Any citizens that would like to address the board, please approach and vote. Okay, moving on. The next item is communications, which it looks like they're outnumbered. Anybody want to add anything there? Okay, moving on from there, we will start with unfinished business. Again, we are going to start with number two, this is special land use for, just continue from April 15th, 2025, the meeting for onsite crushing for Robert Clancy due to proximity to their location. I'll recuse myself, we still have enough for the forum.
So I just wanted to provide an update. The applicant is currently undergoing a big deal to the zoning board of appeals. And we're still waiting to get back from a decision from the ZBA. They tabled it and has to take another meeting to discuss it. And they haven't made it yet. So I would recommend tabling this until the ZBA makes their decision.
Is there a date set for that, the ZBA meeting?
Um, not, I'm not sure at the moment.
Temporary dates.
Are they?
Temporary dates.
Yeah. Between one and three days.
All in favor? And that's on variances?
Correct. Interpretation and variances.
I got to go about that tablement to that poster.
It's under recommend, if I would say yes. Because that's going to know where it can figure. So do we just make a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to table that until after the ZBA makes its decision.
And I'll second that motion.
Can I actually, appreciate your question. In your, tonight's agenda, you say your next meeting is June 17th. So my office may be tabled to that June 17th meeting. It can always be tabled again. At least we know the date certain items to my calendar.
Yeah, we can just table it until maybe.
We can table it every month if you guys want. Thanks to you guys, until when you guys are ready to approach us. Yeah, but I would say what not the June 17th meeting for now? And the ZBA is down to find it or not.
Motion to table that for June 17th?
I'll second that motion.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
The motion has passed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome back, John, you've been on for so long.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Oh my God, the second item on tonight's unfinished business is the home occupation review. It also continues from last month's meeting. Mr. Kramer and Paul Kramer come to have a floor. Good evening, gentlemen. Very hard, sir. Good luck, all you.
So the last item in this meeting here was the ZBA's to me or that's on the meeting that all of the board. He wants to, he wants to continue with the home occupation permit. Right now, we're in the process of getting the barn on the onsite so we can sort that machine in and that's where it's going to be housed. So tonight should clear everything that we got.
And just, just to make this clear, that machine's not going to all fit in that building. The barn is going to be shifted.
There's a little bit of it taken out, but it's going to be. And in there, it doesn't state whether it has to all be in there or not. It just states it has to be housed in a barn. And that's what's going to happen.
If you tell it's in the barn, it's in the barn.
It's all in the barn.
Sure. So are you at this point asking us to table this the next month until you have the opportunity to get that machine in the barn?
Do you need to have proof that it's in the barn? Is that what you need or is it working on the weekends until it's in there? Well, we just have self-care from the wrong or anything?
Procedurally, it's not, there's not like an inspection, right? To go out there and inspect it?
Code enforcement would potentially, I mean, if it was, it'd become code enforcement issue. Again, it's up to the planning commission how they want to proceed on this. If they want to give us a date and that's when we know what we're in. And then that's when the permit can actually be granted. So it could be something like contingency. You guys want to do that to do for a lot of.
You want to just table it through the next meeting.
Do you think, do you think a month is reasonable to be able to?
Basically, it's going to be all four days.
We just have a lot of graduations and stuff coming up. So we're going to be busy for the next few weekends. One more weekend, we'll be busy, so.
Well, stay here, that's one, that's how you guys do that. Just keep it open, you know what I'm saying?
Unless we get it in in the meantime, I'll call one of you guys and then somebody can go play that.
Well, we're, I mean, we're putting it on the agenda for next month, which means you guys will have to appear next month and this lives still is status. Will you get it in, we can move forward granting, granting the permit? If you need more time at that point, we'll talk about it.
Perfect. All right, and then are you guys addressing any, how do you get the agenda? What, are you guys addressing the changes?
Yes, the, let's see. The unfinished business will be, the changes to existing offices.
Okay, so what kind of change, changes are we looking at?
We'll wait there as soon as we're done with your, your number two, then that's number three, so. Okay, so at this time, the applicant has requested to table this matter for another month till the June, was it June 17th meeting? In which time we'll revisit to determine compliance. And hopefully at that time they should permit. Can I get a motion to table this?
I'll make a motion that we table that until June 17th.
My second.
Okay, a motion of the second, all in favor, so you can start by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, carry.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, number three, the third item on tonight's unfinished business is the proposed ordinance amendments. We had three that we had talked about last week, or last one, rather. Karen, you want to take us through where we, where we're at with those?
Yeah, I believe two of them we went over is planning commission, seeing fine the direct changes. Today, I want to focus on the home occupation regulations and the building grades. I guess we can do building grades first. Next, the 77th, they were, we, letting the park issues for permits be barred for any building, show the grade in a session to minimize runoff of surface water on adjacent properties by the use of soil with similar techniques acceptable to the county supervisor or strictly that similar techniques acceptable to the county supervisor and changing that to be other appropriate drainage practices. And that's something, if something did come to question, our engineer can take the county commissioner to look at it, but it was.
Now, was this something that you identified? Because I don't remember talking about that.
No, this is something I was brought up by the administration.
Okay.
So just letting you know, this is included in the package of all things that we're looking at, not really changing.
I think that simple change is a very appropriate one to make.
Now, can we make comment on that?
There'll be another opportunity for citizen comments at that meeting. Ready, moving.
It's not being approved tonight anyways.
Yeah, I just have a few little questions about that. Go to the same time if you're wrong.
Okay, not a normal talk.
Yep.
So for section eight four, home occupation regulations, I struck the notice of proposed, or notice of proposed use to the neighbors because if this falls under special land use, which it sounds like that's what we're planning commission's entertaining doing, that's already a part of the process. So we wouldn't just call it out specifically. And I provided what other communities do for home occupation ordinances so you can kind of see where Casco lines up. Some of the communities in Michigan, I did some painting locally as well as other rural communities on the west side of the city and middle of the state. I can write for Chinas, Clay, Highlands Township, Hopkins Township. And I see though. And a lot are really similar. Hopkins Township, they have the basically two layers of intensity of home occupation that someone might be involved in. One, something, you know, came with the same inside house. And the other one, you know, using more of properties or halves, using accessory buildings, stuff like that.
This is type A, type B?
Yeah. And so I was wondering if you have any thoughts at times on some standards from other communities?
So basically, they just go to type two becomes a special land use compared to?
It can be, yes, it's probably, you know, in fully closed and second home, like someone does like a building or alteration or possibly a salon, something that's taking very minimal on space. That's something that maybe could be approved administratively. But when it's something larger space, you're taking up more of the property, having to do some kind of storage equipment and stuff like that, that's when it would be, fall into that type two category. And again, typically with all these home occupations, you're not generating a lot of traffic. It's not like they're having multiple customers coming to the house at the same time or anything like that. If you were selling something or if you were providing classes and again, if you were a contractor, you know, you're the only person coming and going from the property.
Does this, I like the idea of having different verbiage for different types of businesses.
It's like founder types of providers as well, sorry.
Is it, I haven't read through this whole thing word for word. Is there something that does specify like how many people can be there or how many employees can report there or? I mean, say, for instance, if you have a company that, say, a small lawn care company and the guy's got three employees and they show up and they get into the truck and trailer and they leave for the day, but he's got three guys that come there and leave them, is that?
So that's, that's discretion. Some communities, they say it's basically you and your family members. Some, I think in the type two or type B, it says you can have a employee, doesn't specify what they have to be. You guys have the opportunity to say, you know, again, like I said, you know, show the limited accident of employees. Again, we want to, the residential property's not becoming a commercial property.
Right.
If they're meeting up and maybe you're doing some sort of, you know, equipment maintenance, but the time at that site is very minimal compared to you having to go out to the job. I think that, but then again, how do you enforce that too? I think about that. So, but it's on your guys' discretion what you would like to do as long as it's still keeping your, with.
Well, I think you have to look at the nature of the business, right? I mean, if it's, like you said, if it's a contracting company where companies, where employees come there, then they leave in a company vehicle to go out to a job site, don't they? You know, it seems reasonable. Now, if you want to turn your pole barn into a machine shop or a paint booth and you got six or eight guys working in there all day long and they're coming and going for lunch and this and that, and you're operating there all day, then that's kind of a different story. That's more or less getting into a commercial, commercial land use, so.
And I guess if it was a special land use, that's when, you know, your planning commission judgment would come into play of, does this fall, is this still appropriate for this district? Or does it follow some part of that order?
I think a little bit of the background mechanic. They often, if it's just a guy in his garage a few hours a day, you know, first, if he puts in six lifts and he's got a whole crew of guys that are working seven days a week.
Was there one of these that you particularly liked more than the others? Personally, I did? Or not, not that way?
I like that the Hopkins Township lists type of business. I'll, I'll give you the examples. I don't know if it needs to be that detailed. Clay Township seems to have done a good idea. And then there's a couple others in here that are just kind of like a word. The last one's just a few sentences. This is what their home occupation is.
So we're basically just discussing this today?
We're discussing it. And if there's certain elements that you like, like for instance, having two type of home occupations to consider, you know, then that gives us direction. How do we want to try out fit if we want to not fit?
And, and within these potential to ordinancees, this is where we would spell out like what's allowed and what's not. Like for instance, in Mr. Kramer's case.
And also maybe provide flexibility that are currently doesn't have, but that's something you guys can support.
Right, I mean, I absolutely do think that it would be appropriate because I think, you know, we as, as planning commission need to be able to take a common sense approach instead of just having to follow exactly what's black and white that may not apply universally to all different types of occupations and operations. So in, I was.
One of us, we currently, do all special, do all the occupations have to come to us?
Yes.
So.
It's a permitted use.
It's a permitted use.
So there's no, you guys don't go through the special land use criteria but they have to come for planning permission.
Okay.
And you have to notify the neighbors if it's not a public hearing.
And you have to do that, and that's just because that's what it says. So like if we divide it into A and B where, let's say, A is, and we are very specific to that, A is your, one of the homeowners runs it, that's all my house, it's like a mirquede business.
Right, they're not a company that's.
Yeah, if they want to come to us, they can be approved by.
Right, that could be.
Just a living.
Change it to something where, you know, if you, yeah, if it's something very minimal, you're a piano teacher, whatever. That's something potentially could be just approved administratively by the zoning administrator.
And a good example, a great example was I became the treasurer for quite a few years for the dog club. So literally, the dog club, we don't have, we're everywhere. And we put out shows at different dog places. But I had to come in front of the planning because my address was going to be the treasurer, because I was the treasurer for it. So something as simple as that, where nobody's ever come to my house except for a couple envelopes with checks for the membership. We meet in Rochester at Leader Dog. So it would alleviate me having to come in front of you guys going in and in the office, because it's simple, it's one person, no activity really. Something like that would be easier to find, to be able to approve than not come in front of you guys with six copies and.
Right, so I want to, I want to get clarification from here on one thing. You said that it's a permitted use, but in certain cases, it's a special land use. So where do we make that buy?
Well, right now, it's a permitted use.
All home occupations?
All, all home occupations are permitted use in Casco. So if we amend it and we decide to go, if we decide to divide, there's type A, type B, we could make it where the type A is something that could be approved administratively. Your music teachers, your, you know, woodworkers or whatever. And then stuff that's possibly going to be more intense could be type B, which would be a special land use. And a public hearing would be held. You guys have a special language criteria. You would follow what you could amend the language. So, you know, it is, you know.
What would be an example of that?
With a type B, something more intense. With a contractor or someone, it's, I'm trying to think of this. I'm sure there's, I can't think of anything off the top of my head. I had someone call asking questions. They did not, they haven't submitted an application or anything, but something to do with possibly working with wood and stuff like that. It was more intensive to someone working with a basement or something. So.
With type A, if you're going to just let somebody sign this paper and fill out paperwork and do it, it's not being voted by us. So why is it even a special land use period?
Well, type A wouldn't be special land use, it'd just be permitted.
It'd be permitted. Why are you going to do that because you're running, you're still running business out of your home?
I would say you're an entrepreneur running a home. You're not someone who maybe hasn't a floor elsewhere but you're working from home, that's what's happening. But I, I guess I look at, if you want to put a sign on advertising, my business is here at my house. Someone wanted to contact you or buy something from you, for the services from you, you would have to go, you should be going through the home occupation type A.
Which could be as simple as a permitted use, doesn't have to require a site plan.
And you guys choose to do that. And I should associate, you want home occupations that they're going to be specialized, you still want to review them all. And you guys can still do that too. But that is a route that some communities have decided to go.
Okay.
And if you mentioned the guitar, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you, he doesn't need to come and sit in front of us to put up a sign. You know, I don't know if it's necessary.
So Karen, help us understand, a permitted, what does it look like to get a theoretical type A permitted use occupation approved versus say a type B special land use type operation approved?
Well, it just depends on how we, where the language. But type A is something that's taking place in a room in your home. You either have no customers or maybe only one at a time coming to your house, like if you're a music teacher or something. You know, I can see something like that being a type A. If something is bigger where you're using outdoor buildings for store stuff and employees come, like you say, to go to just get to the job site or whatever, something that might be generating a little bit more traffic, still within the residential care area, but taking up more space. Possibly if there's going to be noise, something like that, then that might fall into the more intense type that would come under review.
Okay, and I.
If you guys decide to.
And I think that's, in my opinion, is that would be a good way to go. What I, what I really want to make sure that we understand is if we were to go that way, how does an applicant get to be able to do that for a type A? And how would an applicant do that for a type B? What does that process look like for the applicant?
I guess they would, I mean, based on what they claim they're doing and how much of their, what part and how much of the property they're using and what the nature of the businesses that would make the determination. We could list out like some of these communities do. Look, this, this is type A, this is type B. Then, you know, we obviously need to further define it by that would be up to you guys to figure out what that discretion is.
Yeah, I see this, the biggest difference would be, are you doing this out of one room in your home or did you build a hundred by sixty four or sort of that?
No, I, I fully agree with you. And I guess what I was, maybe I'm not wording the question right, but what I'm trying to understand is how do you, how do you get the green light to operate a type A type business? Like what does that fully mean? As a permanent, permanent.
Karen, anything, anybody that calls with any type of application that involves either yourselves or the ZBA, always goes to Karen first. She is the one who determines which avenue you're taking.
Okay, so let's say, let's say Karen's determined that it's a type A business, it's a guy who's fixing guitars in the backpack. What is, under this new idea, what does that person need to do to be able to?
It's also a buy for permit. So keep the sketch saying, this is for my businesses. Not that much different than what we're asking now. You might have a questionnaire with criteria asking, this is criteria. And they can say you're a natural, if they need it, I can do it. And if everything checks out, it gets approved. It probably adds up in a permit number in their system. And so that gives them the opportunity if you want to put a sign up saying if, you know, say someone makes art prints or whatever, they want to sell.
So you. By the.
That's what I'm trying to understand. What does that administrative fast track process look like? Do they still have to come to a board meeting and talk to us and tell us all?
Probably that way, you look at the.
No, it's not that way. I'm thinking to make sure, like we just did for Silence Lawrence, they wanted to do that eighty square foot building. We did it administratively. Our zoning administrator went out to make sure that they were meeting that one thousand square foot criteria, which they were well under. He signed off on it and we were done.
Okay.
I think maybe you'll have to fine tune and maybe tweak some of those. That will be the one who.
And in my opinion, that's exactly how that type A, type of occupation should go. And then if it's a type B, then it would be coming in front of board, providing a site plan, notifying the neighbors because it's become special land use.
Still sketch plan, still sketch plan as we do. And then, yeah, we notify neighbors, it's a public hearing, then.
Because it's, it falls to the special. Now, does it have to be special land use?
Doesn't have to, but if it's not special land use, then you guys don't have any discretion.
Gotcha, okay.
And you guys want to follow the special land use criteria.
So we would like to keep it special land use so that we can.
I would say if you're thinking about, for special land use is the way we look at them is they're all, all situations are unique. And so that's why we have this extra layer review. And hopefully with the add language there, that maybe would allow for some flexibility. We could change the language, but then you guys still have, you know, your special language criteria. We have to make sure it's still being the character that you put. You know, it's not doing anything that's detrimental because I think you find in certain instances, there's businesses that come up that we don't anticipate because we haven't thought of it before. And it's not, say, that's not a good idea, but maybe our language doesn't necessarily line up to it, so.
And so for clarification, the way that the ordinance is currently written requires, it's not a special land use?
It's not a special land use, but still requiring us to notify neighbors, which is not an issue, but typically we do that for a public hearing to coordinate, I'm going to be able to, pretty concrete, I can come and talk about this. And it still can be the. And it still can bring the general comment period, but county commissioners should not be taking those comments into account for their decision making if it's a permitted use.
So the, the, in, in a special land use type scenario, that would give us more discretion as a board and it would also give the residents time to speak on the topic.
On the topic, and you guys can take their comments and it's your decision making process.
So permitted use is black and white, very bottom line?
Should be.
So Clay's number one use has some really, it looks very simplified. Um, there, so that would be like on the second page, if you read just where it says home occupation, number one, that A, B, C, and D, that's what seems like it would be your simple ones that they've been. Cause it just has, you, it's basically for telephone, fax, and whatever offsite. You're using only things that like your home usually supplies. And then they go on, if you look to the next page, to your bigger... So that's kind of what we're talking about, I think.
Yeah, so they've got a type one of four land use.
Yeah, type one or type one.
Type one permitted, two special land use. What is something like this, I don't know. It is like in this plate, uh, yeah, it's Clay Township. So I'm looking at page three, under type two, special land use, you know, it's kind of describing two different things. Sale and distribution of merchandise, um, showing the one only, basically talking about traffic. The repair, uh, number five, the repair and or servicing of vehicles, including recreational vehicles and or other similar equipment shall not be deemed as customary home occupations. So basically what they're saying is if I wanted to have a business where I repair four wheelers in my garage, that's not allowable because it's not a customary home occupation.
That's what it reads, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, you can fix your own, but I think they don't want you taking other people's.
No, they're there mechanics.
See, I, in my opinion, I, I think the more you limit, the more you run into situations where you, you're just limiting what people can do in their own home. You know, if I, if I got four, five eighty polebar, you know, and, and I'm a good mechanic, I work at a shop all day, and I want to wrench out a four wheeler at night for, you know, a neighborhood kid or something, that doesn't seem like that should be...
Well, that's just always the same, maybe, it's not...
Right.
It's the same, I see it.
There's, there's smart, smart people that work out in their company because they have to.
Yeah.
It's a basis of where to start though. We're looking at heading in that direction. Maybe we don't want, maybe we want these two classifications, but we don't want these two classifications to read exactly like they read here.
Yeah.
I definitely appreciate all the different examples.
We can start, start with that as a framework and build off of that.
So if I, if I, I do quoting, okay? And if I make quotes for quotes of valor that we give to veterans, for free, and then just nobody else, except me, would I need a permit for that?
Are you making money off it?
Pardon me?
Are you making money off it?
No.
Then you wouldn't, no?
What if she was?
If she wanted to advertise the sales of her quotes?
Can't put a sign on her front?
Put a sign on her lawn?
Oh my God, no, not a castle. We can't have that.
But she could, and then she had to apply for it as a township.
Cast, fuck you.
I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking for veterans.
There's a lot of situations where you wouldn't need to do this. Like I said, if you, if you work from home because that's what your, your, what your current business does not have a, a current warrant it can go to, you just work from home. You won't, this is not something you do. Like if you're an entrepreneur trying to do something on some premise, then, you know...
Yeah, but, yeah, please, let's, let's keep it to, let's just the comments. I think, I, I think this is good framework to, to start. But I think if we could all take some time and, and maybe just jot some notes and provide some guidance to Karen as to what we like, what we don't like. My biggest concern is, is things in these ordinances that are very, very restrictive that make no difference to the outcome. Here's a perfect example. In number six on, on that type two from Clay, they allow you a commercial vehicle, but it has to be in your building. And it says, the presence of the vehicle shall not occupy or over six hundred square feet of the accessory building space. Who cares if that commercial vehicle is six hundred square feet or eight hundred square feet? It's in the building.
Yeah, but you also have to remember that's Clay Township through the parcel size, our peanuts can correct that.
I understand that. I understand that. If you, if you live in Clay Township and you have the space to build a, a eighty by one hundred polebar, why does it matter how much of that polebar it takes off?
Yeah, I think it's more similar like than agricultural, like, than cash flow, you know?
I don't follow that stuff at all because it's...
Well, they are.
But they're not allowed to do a lot.
My point is, if they're gonna allow you to have a vehicle in your barn, why does it matter if it takes up half the barn, the whole barn, or six hundred square feet of the barn?
Why do you put up six hundred square feet?
It's in the barn, that's all that should matter.
I don't, I think we have a commercial building, you shouldn't have to have a part of your barn or anything.
Well, I agree, I agree too. But to put, put a sign to that, that wants its inside, I don't think...
I agree a hundred percent too.
So we both agree.
Right. I think we need to go through the pieces, there's adding things and, and then get back with Karen and...
Yeah, I think we took out the list of buildings from A to Z. Because there's a library of businesses from A to Z that you have to go through and figure out which ones would fall under class A, which ones would fall under like class B. We find that, so it makes it simpler, for the easier business and then more difficult for them to go where they have to go in a planning business. That shouldn't, you know, a truck, a cab, or something, they're open up to go through that business and figure out which... That's just what they're offering people on the job, and so planning people are saying, we couldn't all just make the inside back on. I'm upset with that.
Exactly.
You know, what I see, you made it, of course, when you mean that in...
Sorry.
You're driving.
You can't, you can't actually...
Right.
But it's not, it's not...
Your truck is a higher...
But then the trailer, the truck, it's a... All right, so I, I, it's my opinion that we review these, these occupation ordinances from neighboring communities and provide Karen with some direction as to what we like, what we don't, so that she can start to draft, uh, potentially a new home occupation ordinance, which of course we'll continue to talk about.
And I'd also ask, look at your current ordinance too, and the standards that you think are, uh, you can take issue with. Who's also making you that?
Absolutely. Have you read my first off?
Yeah.
I agree with her.
All right.
There were, uh, what were, please remind me, what were the other two that we had talked about last, that's one?
Um, we had something on self-storage units.
Oh yeah, we talked about that.
And we also had, um, procedural stuff about the plant restamping items and planters, um, period stamps.
Oh yeah.
And, um, also we had the workable energy ordinance. And I kind of put that on hold, um, based on the news that the county wants to also add their own provisions to, or that county, department wants to add their own provisions to renewable energy, um, developments. And whether or not that goes through, we should make sure that we're lying with their language. So I guess I'm kind of really gonna see what, what, what ends up getting passed at the county level.
Anybody else have anything on ordinance amendments?
Good discussion.
I, I think, like I said, I think we all need to do our due diligence. Obviously, home occupation is, is what we have in front of us. But, I mean, I know we're all busy and we got things in our full-time lives, but let's, let's do what we can to maybe address any other ordinance, um, shortcomings that we may know of or, or want to address so that we can keep this conversation moving forward. Um, and, and continue to provide Karen with other areas that we can be, make better.
Maybe a suggestion, maybe a workshop that we all can get together, sit down and maybe go over these before a planning motion or something like that, so we're all on the same table.
We can't do that.
We're not, we're not...
We can't do that, we'll do it here.
The public...
That's what I'm calling, yeah, that's spending time with the community.
I mean, you can do it, you can certainly do it. Wouldn't that be, I mean, the public at that point, because there at some point in time there will be a public hearing. Is that correct?
Right.
Fine, we should...
Guys, why be listening to a lot of time to take into that?
It would be a public hearing, just like...
So, gotcha.
And the only thing on your agenda would be...
That.
Yeah.
Your, there's gonna be a lot of time to take into this, to look at it. We're just gonna rush through it and...
Well, I was gonna ask Karen, but maybe I'll take this opportunity. You're gonna be getting input from seven different people potentially. Is there any way we can streamline it through my office to get it to you? Like, from all seven?
No, they can, they, they can, they email you. Now, if you guys want, I can email you guys with the word documents. And whether you wanna march up my hand, like Brenda, or I can scan it, or if you want to type in whatever your thoughts are on some of these, um, you guys can do it that way, you can email. Whatever you're sending, Brenda hasn't had it before I did it. She's the county supervisor, she's the boss of the commission. So...
Send it to Brenda, Brenda before I do.
So forwarded to Karen, and then what, however we respond back, we'll just do a mass email then, so all of them get all the comments that you've all put together from Karen.
But we know for sure we wanna do the thing of it. We definitely wanna do the two-part. It's simplified and more complicated.
I think it's something we can look at.
Yeah, you might want to make a decision like that.
Not at all.
I don't wanna call it all, you be, I can, I can be limited, and I can use state examples, and then allow it to, let her determine what's good and bad in the end.
Okay, well, it's, it wasn't thought to, but put your thoughts on paper or virtual paper and send it to... So Brenda, what Karen, do what she does. Okay, anything else on ordinance amendments? Have you pulled ordinance amendments? At this point, we close our unfinished business. There is no new business for tonight. The next item on the agenda would be reports from committees. Tina, you have anything from the board?
No.
Do you have anything from the ZBA?
Uh, we pulled from the ZBA for the, uh... For the...
Clancy?
Yeah, Clancy.
It was set scheduled for June fourth, but there's been a, um, one of the quorum allowing present. I mean, we still have the quorum that Mr. Clancy, attorney's requesting. They postponed it, as he's done before for the lack of the full presence.
Gotcha, okay.
So that date's kind of out there again.
All right. Um, anything else from the committees? Karen, plant update?
Um, I have to do continuing education to keep my plant certification and have a really interesting, um, class about, um, basically changing our landscape ordinances so that they kind of conserve water and are, um, reduce water hazards and also, um, encourage healthy plant growth, something I'm noticing a lot as a planner. It bothers me is a lot of these interior parking lot landscaping requirements a lot of communities have. I don't think you guys have a lot to do. And the purpose of this is to reduce heat islands, and it comes from a good place. A lot of times the plants that get planted there don't do well. Um, so we're trying to encourage communities to be a bit more creative about how we look at our landscaping ordinances. And that's something that I would like to look at for all my communities, because everyone has the same thing we want. Deciduous trees, evergreens, and shrubs. And you might not specifically call out exactly what you can plant and tell you definitely what you can't plant, um, but maybe offer a bit more encouragement on how to, um, make these plantings, uh, more for family, friends, or community.
That's interesting. Are those, uh, for township properties or is it residential too?
No, it's a type of landscape we kicked in for commercial properties, maybe for like multi-family complexes.
Okay.
Um, residential, I believe we usually have landscaping requirements. Um, so it's mostly for commercial properties.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
No, that's all.
Uh, at this time, we had another opportunity for citizen comments. If any citizen would like to approach the podium and write a comment, please feel free to do so.
You didn't get this one, though. Um, one on drainage thing.
Yes.
Okay, there's always been an ordinance, every lot has to contain home water.
Correct.
So what are we talking about now? We're wanting to change this to something?
No, the only other thing that's changing this ordinance is that we're taking away the approval of the township supervisor and changing the verbiage to appropriate drainage practices, which would be determined by an actual engineer rather than Joe's opinion on what's right or wrong. Or anti-township supervisor.
You understand, the engineers don't want to have that.
Well, I mean, that's what they're...
Yeah, they, it's been shown that they're going to take run water where it shouldn't be going. And that's a problem where all the city lots have that. So they're just gonna start installing drains and then tiles and everything else. It's common sense for the water to go how it's gonna drain. Other than like, you know, older micros for, you know, roll and allow it all this and drain it out of life.
Right, I mean, there you go, but I can remember one thing, it's, it's common sense to a guy like you that does this for a living, but it's not common sense to everybody.
Yeah, if you're, if you're...
Do you understand, do you understand drainage and grading and all people don't?
You're a judge. You're a supervisor, you're an inspector. You, you're supposed to know all this. And it was law on my property from all sides.
But that's why we're taking out the township supervisor out of this. Right.
Yeah, but even the engineers do the same BS.
Yeah, I don't, we don't want... I'm sorry, I'll tell that.
You know, I was, I was over here at this township law complaining about all that stuff, and nobody did a damn thing about it. And I suffered for years until I decided two years ago, screw everybody, I'm gonna go back to where it should be and let it drain out.
But what, what you also have to understand is this bullet point in the grade, building grades section of the ordinance is basically explaining how it should be done. And then it says that it shall be graded in such a manner to minimize runoff of surface water onto adjacent properties by the use of swells or other appropriate drainage practices. So basically, what it's saying is you have to manage the water.
Exactly.
And what it's also saying is, it used to say, similar techniques acceptable by the township supervisor. So now we're taking the decision-making power from the township supervisor on what he believes is a similar technique to a swell. And putting it in the opinion of a professional who would say, all right, this situation of swell would work, this situation of swell won't work, maybe a, a dry site, maybe an underground cooler. That's all that this is saying, is that the township supervisor no longer has the, the decision-making ability to determine what a similar technique to a swell would be.
Well, how do you define supervisor change? See, on those spots. It's supposed to be an inspector's job, as in building inspector. He has to follow great state law.
That's what we're doing, which is...
What it says is, what it says is, prior to issue of a permit, the yard around the new building shall be graded in such a manner to minimize runoff of water runoff onto adjacent properties by the use of swells. Right. Period.
But who's approving?
The building inspector.
Okay, that's what we're supposed to do for all effort around.
And that's the way it's done. That's something changed that. What's this change is...
Project command.
That's what we're taking out of the supervisor.
But he never had a statement for it, did he?
Might be, you're so little, like, and all you want is written in a book.
Because it's...
When I was in this, it was written.
I don't know.
Well, we're, we're working on making it better.
That's fine. That's what I wanna make sure, because I don't need another headache like I've got now. And if you're gonna take him suck doing drains, then you better suck doing them in everybody's ear.
I don't think that's...
And clean bitches, so it actually accepts it.
That's not, that's, that's a common issue.
And that, generally, can you say, in this circumstance, we would be in touch with the drain commission. If there's ever a neighbor problem, a neighbor, neighbor, is it flood my property or flood my property, it has been the general practice here of late that the drain commission is called and a representative of the drain commission... called, and a representative of the drain commission goes to the property site, makes that determination, and what they say, goes.
And that can be, that can be before, that can be before or after.
The construction.
Construction, so.
Absolutely. And when you have a problem such as that, the township has no jurisdiction over sales suits between neighborhood issues. You're flooding my property, we don't, we can't take that out.
Okay, but here, here's the problem now, okay? You're telling somebody one thing, then you're telling them again something else. Water has to drain to somewhere, it can't sit stagnant. There's where most of the problem is. And that's the problem I have now with Jim next door.
That doesn't have anything to do with this ordinance change.
But sure enough, if, if you go, right, or John, if you go and he can do that, and the flow gets through, you get the water sits, sits there stagnant, it's not moving.
Right, I, I understand, and that's why this says, "By the use of swells or other appropriate drainage practices."
Mm-hmm, so that water has to go somewhere, it can't sit there.
Well, this doesn't specifically say anything about water, stagnant water, sitting.
It says runoff.
Right.
So it has.
But why, why, why?
Right, but if it's sitting there stagnant, at the property line, where's it going? Nowhere.
That's not anything we're dealing with, right?
But we need to, because if the water sits there, that creates enough of a headache.
Well, that's true. What if it's the reason?
Dish needs to be dug out.
Well, if the reason is, if the dish needs to be dug out, then township needs to have the county, because that's what the county is supposed to do, is bring the.
The township has to pay for certain.
Add to township's approval, okay? Now, if that's the case, then he has to figure out, homeowner has to figure out how he's gonna get that water to move.
Right. I get it, I get what you're saying, that this is, that's a drain commission.
Then we also need to start doing something, because I'm tired of having a dirty, infested property line that's encroaching on my property.
I get it, I, I absolutely agree with you, but that's. Like Brenda just said, a drain commission, which means you and your neighbor, and water, whether it's running on your property, off your property, not running at all, that needs to be addressed to the drain commission.
And the drain commission tells you to go to the township, and the township goes back to the drain commission. So I mean, the, the ball melts back and forth.
There. Has the drain commission been out of your house? Has the drain commission been out of your house?
They've been out for quite a few times.
And what do they say?
To township. It's not our problem.
Yeah.
And, and, and it's very simple for him to fix, but he won't fix it.
Like I said, and Brenda said, we don't have any jurisdiction over, over, over the drain commission.
So when I build the property up and keep flooding it up there, it's not a problem.
It doesn't make any difference to me.
Exactly, so when, when you guys go, what do you say, hey, you're flooding this guy out?
No, you're, you're, exactly the same thing I'm telling you, if you have a problem with water runoff, contact the drain commission. If they won't do anything about it, well, that's their jurisdiction, I can force their hand.
That's fine.
Okay, so I'm, I'm telling you the same thing that I'll tell them.
I just want to make sure it's clear. And then, uh, the second one is on the occupancy.
Yes.
Okay? If you guys are trying to categorize anything, when it, when it's coming to the commercial one, like, um, you're talking the, the section E, you guys understand that you're gonna do this, and you're gonna start discriminating against certain businesses.
I mean, I think I was very clear, I don't want it to be that.
I know, I'm just saying, what, what you guys are talking? I mean, it's kind of.
About not doing that.
It's all, to me, and it just like, you mean, I'm a stupid person I am, but everything seems to be that it can be solved real easy. I mean, you've got your heavy commercial, you've got your light commercial, like a landscaper, he could have, he could have one, one guy come, he could buy, he might have ten guys. So now, if you're, if you're limiting to certain amount of people that can come and show up and get into like a company vehicle and leave, the, the, you, you're causing trouble.
Well, no, not necessarily, because you have to understand, at, at, at a certain point, it's still a residential district, and your neighbors don't want to live next to an operation, this guy might be a landscaper, but he's got 40 employees, they don't want to listen to. If you're a company of 10 or 15 or 30 employees, it's time, you've grown enough, it's time to go rent or buy a commercial space. If you're one guy in a Hummer, and you're just, your, your Hummer shows up, you guys get the truck, walk, cut grass all day, I don't think anyone would have a problem with that. But when you get to a certain size, and you've got multiple cars, multiple employees showing up every day, seven o'clock in the morning, all these employees are congregating, loading trucks, all that, it's time to move on to commercial stuff.
Definitely, I, I agree with you.
So that's where we're talking about, trying to find what's that happy medium between a full-scale commercial operation and a small, monopot contractor company.
You know, and like you said, I, I've, I've once, I don't know, I've given township supervisors time, and I have agreed to all the compliances that supposedly were on this ordinance in this township. I could have one truck, one machine, one trailer, one sunroof, outside, anything other than that, you, you get either in the, inside of the building, or it was offsite. And if it was winter time, they understood, nine machines end up back at the place, they get ranch down, whatever, they're back out in the springtime. My place normally, I don't have anything in my area, but pickup trucks, a trailer or two, um, so, you know, to, to go and take and, and try to make basically an example out of me, because I see it done around this township all over, and your ordinance officer doesn't even do his job and go and get these other guys that drive, driving in on the carpet, but you're doing it for me because of one person, and I understand. I've, I've, I've tried my damnedest to go and comply with everybody, but I can't make ev- everybody happy, never gonna.
Right, I mean, I didn't.
And, and I tried doing everything I can possibly do to, to make everybody happy, but I'm never gonna make this one person happy.
Right, that's, it's really not, it's not your responsibility to make anybody happy other than people on this board, so that you can get the approval that you're looking for.
Well, that.
And I know, I know, whoever started it, it doesn't matter, we're the ones with you that are working to finish it. And the point I'm making is, if you follow what's on there or what's to come after we rewrite this, you're not gonna have any confidence. We've tried to explain that, I know you, and I say this with all respect, I know you think you've complied with everything. Unfortunately, you haven't, otherwise we would have approved you, and we're working towards that point. You guys are getting there, every, every month you get a little bit closer.
You do.
And that's why we keep taping it, instead of just saying, Larry, you're denying.
I understand that, but, you know, the, the thing that the Democrats gotta understand through, through the agents, since I've been doing this, this stuff, and my family, we, we've, we've always gone from what the township supervisor has told us, this is what the, the ordinance is reading, and this is what you've gotta do. This is what's gonna make people home that shut them off, so we've done.
Unfortunately, township supervisors have, have interpreted the ordinances in different ways and have given you information that obviously doesn't align with what is actually written in the ordinance. So yes, I understand what you're saying, people, township, previous township supervisors have told you things that we are not telling you is contrary to what they said. Unfortunately, you're, we're going on a handshake deal, a verbal conversation between you and somebody who's not here anymore. My only, my only decision-making ability is based on what's written in black and white in the ordinance.
You don't understand, it's been well over 25 years, so it's not like it's changed the last 10 years or.
And I'm, I'm understanding what you guys said, okay? I don't, I've always been in consensus then, it's, I'm sorry, okay? But it's, it's been, it's been a rocky road. One, 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 one time it's one thing, next time it's, it's a different thing. And then, then we're back at this part, and we're going to this part, you know, we're at this part right now, and I don't mean to, to, to go into and, and say, okay, now you're approved, and then, um, somebody missed up from it, and then I'm back in on the imperative.
Larry, if we're gonna talk about your specific case, can we take that into next month's meeting?
That's, that's fine, because I want to know exactly what, what, what changes you guys are looking towards, and then, you know.
Well, we're talking about that they will be presented as they are before they're ever, before they're ever entered into, into this, there's a long process that goes into making it so.
Then that's, that's what I want, because when, when we first talked about getting these things changed, you guys all said, there was a, we'll talk to supervisor, we'll go to the ZBA, and I talked with Joe, and Joe tells me, yeah, it's never gonna change.
Okay, there is a process to change it, we're clearly talking about making changes, so regardless of what Joe told you or the ZBA told you, you're here tonight, hearing us for yourself talk about making changes.
And that, that's.
Nothing more like to do.
Whatever change you guys are making, I want, I, that's.
You know, like, like you just heard, Mike proposed a, 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 a ordinance workshop, and the very first thing that everyone else said was, it will be held at a public meeting so that everybody can know what we're talking about. We're not gonna do anything in secrecy, we're not gonna do anything behind closed doors. Any of these ordinances that, that will be changed or modified anyway, will be discussed at this board, will go to a public hearing, will then go to the township board for final approval. It's, it's a pretty good process.
That's what I would be, just let me know when it's, if I can come over here and act in or two.
Keep an eye on the agenda. It's, it's publicly published, June 11th, while the damage is better viewed.
You're fine.
All right.
Well, thank you, Larry.
You gotta keep these down, three minutes down, and you're not supposed to engage with them, you love them, they have their comments, and that's like you shut it down. And I did in McComb County, we never did it like this, a great detail, it's not supposed to work, is it? Keep it to three minutes.
Any other citizen comments?
Just give that an issue.
It's just how it's supposed to run, I don't mind any questions.
That's procedure.
It's a process.
I have a policy, that.
Well, it's like that in McComb too, sir.
Is it?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure it goes over three minutes, issues.
Usually comments are considered like this, we're not supposed to engage, you down with our comments, and then, that's it, we hear your comments.
I'll give them my three minutes, you wanna get back up? I appreciate it.
The point of citizen comments is not to address in great detail items that would be on the agenda, it's for a quick, three-minute or less comment. That's what we all need to keep in mind here. Again, any other citizen comments? Okay, moving on, any commission comments? There's no other comments, uh, I would make, or I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry. A motion to second adjournment, 802, all in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
All votes, thank you.